Thank you. So the first person tonight is Kristana Fati.
Hello, my name is Kristana Fati and I am a Level Two Paraeducator at Work Experiences and I reside in Linwood. This is my third time participating in the Edmunds School District Board Meeting by Public Comment on behalf of my team, program, students, and their families. The first time was April 23rd and the second was May 14th. Since then, the Work Experience team has continued to work hard to advocate for our program. On May 20th, Work Experience has sent a three-phase strategic plan to support the proposal that was presented to pilot an on-campus program while maintaining our current model. On May 21st, Work Experiences created and conducted a petition/survey with 56 participants, 35 leaving comments. May 23rd, the team disabled responses after being asked by admin to disable it and then created and sent a report of the findings to the participants, the board, Dr. Minor, and Student Services. Interpreting the data, the majority went/want the current model of Work Experiences. There was also overall support to pilot a program in one high school while maintaining our current space. Overall, it is not supported by the majority to dissolve the program into the five high schools by next school year and eliminate the current location and option. On May 24th, the Work Experience team received an email from Dr. Minor that a decision was made by her to continue the work to dissolve the Work Experiences program into the five high schools. That brings us to today. We have yet to receive the answers and clarifications we seek. Student Services has yet to present a thought-out and organized plan as how this is to be executed by next school year in a financially wise and equitable way. As a tax-paying citizen in this district, a mother of three children in this district, as a well-experienced, dedicated educator in this district, and a dedicated advocate for people with disabilities in this district, I am utterly disappointed. I can't understand how the feedback given by many is not considered, especially after spending nearly $40,000 to conduct a study into certain Student Services practices and leadership in 2022, which one of the complaints made was disregarding feedback when establishing and canceling programs. This leaves me asking so many questions. Where is the responsibility and the accountability? As a board, you are the community's voice. With respect, the community is speaking, and many more continue to speak about their concerns. Where are the actions that show they are being heard? Is anyone actually listening? I invite everybody on the board to come out, visit our program, see what it's about, spend some time with us. Come on June 4th. As a matter of fact, we're having a huge party. We have it every year. Our students lead it. Please come and see us.
Next is Sue Daniels.
Hi, my name is Sue Daniels. I'm the supervisor of the Work Experiences program. I reside in Everett. I'm here today on behalf of past, present, future, and future Work Experiences students. This is the second time I've participated in a board meeting and appreciate the opportunity to speak. I've worked in the district for nearly 25 years. In that time, I've taken great pride in helping prepare young people for their lives after they have completed school. Every person's life looks very different, and as educators, we should listen to parents and students, both former and current, representatives from group homes, business partners, and educators from around the district. In an effort to give those a voice, we provided a form as a vehicle for feedback. After only two days, I was asked to take the form down, silencing some of the voices. However, some had a chance to be heard. I'd like to share one thoughtful, heartfelt letter that we received. I'm not sure who the student or the parent is, but I am the parent of a student who has a cognitive disability. I'm not sure how to articulate how upsetting some of my experiences have been as a parent in this district. I have had teachers try to convince me that having my daughter stay at high school was what was best and that it was what was inclusive and right. What I later found out is that my daughter wasn't ever truly accepted in mainstream classes. Her peers often took pity on her. They didn't see her truly. They felt sorry for her. My child was put in overly stimulated environments for the sake of belonging, just to be embarrassed by having a meltdown in front of her peers. Does this sound like real inclusion? Does this sound right? I feel bad as a mom about this. I then explored more into embracing who she is as a person with disabilities and got involved in parent support groups and the ARC. And that is when I realized I needed to shift my thinking. My child isn't the same as her peers, and that is okay. She has an experience in life I know nothing about because I don't have a disability. I realized that I was trying to force something on her because it made me think like I was doing what was right, and it made me feel good. But what I was actually doing is not accepting who she is and not celebrating her differences or teaching her about community. After I realized this, I realized that I should embrace, I should embrace and celebrate her, that I should accept her. I should encourage connections and community in her own community. And when I began shifting, this is, this I saw a beautiful thing develop in her. She had things to do and people to see who loved her. The rest of the letter is/was forwarded to you, and I just think it was a beautiful thought from that mom. So thank you for listening.
Next is Betsy Tsukimura.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Tsukimura. Good job with my last name, by the way. And I reside in Edmunds. I'm the parent of two students at Madrona K-8. I'm here to share my concerns about the impact of the decision to eliminate the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Visual Impairment Program Manager position for the 2024/25 school year due to the budget shortfall. My oldest child has been part of the DHH program for seven years. Our family chose to move into the Edmunds School District specifically because we wanted him to have the support and resources offered through this unique program. We wanted a program that was based in American Sign Language and offered strong language role models. We wanted a program with experts in deaf education and an environment where deaf students were given unfettered access to the whole school community. At Madrona, my child has thrived. He has other deaf and hard-of-hearing peers, access to technology that helps him hear in the classroom, interpreters for his Gen Ed classes and all school events, and teachers who understand how to use his technology and support his specific learning needs. From a parent's perspective, the role of a DHH Program Manager who's fluent in American Sign Language and has a strong background in deaf education is critical to DHH student's success. The DHH Administrator has supported our IEP meetings, offering helpful ideas rooted in familiarity with the deaf culture. The Program Manager's knowledge of deaf culture helps them to provide ongoing training and support for Gen Ed and deaf student, teachers, and staff to ensure they have the necessary skills to support DHH students. This helps maintain the quality of education provided within the DHH program as well as equity and access for all DHH students. One practical solution may be to transfer the duties of the DHH Program Manager to a Special Education Administrator position. However, this solution is only practical if the Special Education Administrator has a background in deaf education and is fluent in ASL. The needs of DHH students are unique within the special education environment. Another solution may be hiring an administrator who could split time between the DHH Administrator role and serving as an Assistant Principal at Madrona. Another option would be to assign a teacher on special assignment to perform some of the non-supervisory tasks, such as reviewing IEPs, attending IEP meetings, and collaborating with DHH staff and Gen Ed staff who are working with DHH students. I'm concerned that if there is no one specifically responsible for managing the DHH program, the students and the DHH staff will suffer the consequences. I hope you'll consider reestablishing the Program Manager position. Thank you for listening.
I just wanted to let you know that we, I have heard some of those same things that you've said, and I am talking with people about how we can keep some of the culture of the program together, and some of the things you mentioned are things that are, that are being discussed. So your concerns have been heard, and definitely we are working towards something. So I just ask you to have a little patience with us as we work on that.
Thank you. Next is PJ Tuch.
Hello, everybody. You're glorious board that you are. Thank you for this wonderful support we've got here tonight, same as two weeks ago. My name is PJ Tuch. I'm a Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program employee. I've worked in multiple positions over my 20-year tenure with the district. This is the first time in my 20-year tenure that I've heard any whisper of something like this happening. Imagine the game Jenga. You've played Jenga, right? Everybody here's played Jenga, right? Imagine a Jenga in your head. Now, imagine that the whole Jenga thing is resting on one little tiny wood piece at the bottom. Pull that piece out. What happens to the Jenga? It collapses. The Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program position is that last Jenga piece. Thank you.
Next is Liz Ford.
My name is Liz Ford. I'm the Head Custodian at Linwood High School, a resident of Edmunds, and the President of the SCIU Custodial Group. We are aware of the projected district budget shortfall that is necessitating cuts to departments and programs, and understand that the board has not come to these decisions lightly. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the district's decision to eliminate six custodians and to reduce the hours of 56 more from full-time to 200-day employees. It's important to recognize the twofold consequences of the cuts to custodial services. First, our work includes keeping classrooms and restrooms sufficiently clean after daily use by literally thousands of people. A close analogy is emergency room triage. The day-to-day cleaning that custodians do is similar to keeping a patient stable until there's more time to really improve their declining condition. Those times are winter, spring, and summer breaks when custodians team up to deep-clean their buildings. The average school is 20 to 70 times larger than the average single-family home. These reductions effectively leave a single custodian to deep-clean during breaks, and our buildings will not be as clean as students and staff need. One might look at the current example of Tacoma School District, which is publicly under fire by staff and students for the condition of their buildings after leaving custodial positions vacant and reducing custodial hours. We also provide logistical support for sports, music programs, clubs, and multiple other activities at every grade level. We assist teaching staff with classroom moves, provide direct support to other district departments, support community use rental groups by setting up and taking down their events, and ensure that our buildings are secure against burglary and vandalism after school hours. We are custodians, not janitors. We don't just clean our buildings. We see to the needs of everyone in them. We take immense pride in the work we do to support our district community. The second effect of these cuts is the personal impact to custodians. The six people losing their jobs will obviously be suffering the greatest impact due to the elimination of their positions. Reducing the work year of 56 Level One custodians feels especially inhumane. Level One custodians are one of the lowest compensated groups among all the departments funded by the district. Many are working additional jobs just to make ends meet. With continuing increases to housing costs and inflation coupled with the reduction of work hours, the majority of these custodians are concerned they'll be unable to pay rent or provide for their families. Some live a considerable distance from the buildings they work because they cannot afford to live in Snohomish County. Many have shared with me that they won't be able to afford the commute to work on their new wages or find affordable housing. Over a quarter of the Level Ones have served the district for more than 20 years, and more than half have served for more than 10. It's a bitter pill to have invested so many years of their lives in the students, staff, community, and the buildings they serve, to be told now their efforts are no longer essential to the educational process. I implore the board to please rethink your decision to deeply cut the Custodial Department.
And thank you for the service. We, we appreciate you. We understand their difficult decisions here, but we just want you to know you are valued. Next up is Thomin Shulafan.
I want to ensure you can pronounce my name correctly. It's a hard one for everybody, so I actually have it recorded here. I'm gonna let you listen to it. Hopefully the volume's up high enough. Can we hear it? No. Let me get the volume up. Let's try it again. I don't know what's going on. Yeah, yeah, and the, I'm gonna have the interpreter voice it for me, although the interpreter can't remember how to say it either. It sounds like Ta Vin. Ta Vin. It helps. All right, now, back to what I was gonna say. Ta Vin, yes. Okay, my actual, I know it's a strange name, I'm sorry. I'm gonna take, move my, the mic stand away there so you can actually see me. So here's my namesign, Ta Vin. I made some notes for myself. I am deaf, so I have long-winded answers to everything. I'll make this as short as I can. I've been a para for 17 years with the district. I have been supporting students who have been language-deprived. I have supported students who are language-delayed. I heard about, I was here two weeks ago, people talked about deaf culture and the importance of it therein. I want to emphasize a couple of very specific points. The Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program Manager here, he acts as our middleman. I don't think you understand the importance of that role. He knows what we're doing, specifically in the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program, right? And he knows what you're doing on the upper echelon, and he acts as the bridge in between. If we take that bridge away, there's no connection between us. I know you want to put somebody else in his place, but he doesn't, whoever you're gonna put in isn't gonna understand Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing education. They're not gonna be the expert in the language and the culture, et cetera. You have to have that bridge position. Without it, our communication's gonna fall apart. Secondly, I know we already talked about the deaf culture thing and understanding of what deaf needs are, and how do we, how do we meet those needs? Anybody off the shelf can't do it. You have to have somebody with this expertise, or you're, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna impact all the student body. Like I said, I've been here for 17 years. I've seen the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program get better and better and better and better, and you should be proud of this. It's a regional program. It draws people in from everywhere. It's a magnet. You've built this amazing magnet, and now you want to jeopardize it. We've shown what we can do. We've shown how, as a program, attractive we are. People move into this district to be part of this district. There's gonna be ebbs and, it's gonna wax and wane, as all programs do. We understand that. But keeping this Program Manager is vital to the program growing and getting better. If you have, and, and you've got all these people here just gonna say the same thing. Also, the Visually Impaired Pro, same thing, same thing. People without, who are not experts in visual impairment are gonna say, oh, you're doing fine. You need somebody with expertise therein, who can actually say, no, it's not going well, and here's why. And they can articulate, here's why. They understand not just how things work, but why things work. And my last comment, I would like to say, just keep the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program Manager. Please, I ask you. That is all for me. Thank you.
Next is Crystal Renner.
This is my first time here. I'm a little nervous about this. My name is Crystal Renner. I'm a parent of two children who are both disabled, and I personally am a graduate from this program. This is a very serious issue. I mean, I grew up here. We've had a Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program for years and years and years. This program impacts our needs for generations now, literally generations. Deaf learning happens here with a new manager to bring in. Now we have somebody who has deaf culture, who's lived it, right? We've got a subject matter expert from the inside out right now in this, in this role. And we're still struggling because it's, it's, there's a lot to do. It's a huge program. It's a huge ask. It's a huge task on his plate that he has to try and manage. And this is a person who's a subject matter expert. We need to continue with this program. Like we said, we need that middleman. We need it, just like Ta Vin said. Without it, who's gonna come in who knows this stuff? Who do you have in the wings that we don't know about? Who's, who's gonna say if things are going right in the IEPs? Who's gonna be able to actually provide appropriate input that will actually help students' growth, right? Who else do you have? The Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program, you have the person you need in the position that they're in. Please keep them. Please maintain the status quo where we are. Thank you.
Next is Lori Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Lori Schmidt. I'm a resident of Edmunds, and I am a teacher here in the district, specifically as, for the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program. I represent one of the few hearing people in our program. I'm one of the minorities, because most of the people in our program, most of the employees at our program are deaf themselves. So I represent the minority as it should be for a deaf program. I want to thank you for hearing us two weeks ago. I want to thank you for receiving our emails and our letters and our cries for help. I want to thank you for being willing to work with us. That's been a big ask. And I think the main message that just plays in my head again and again and again is just, like it's been said many times, someone with knowledge in deaf education, because we're not better, we're not better than any other program out there. We just have a very unique linguistic and cultural aspect. And the other thing is, for my colleagues, being a person of privilege, I can talk to Dr. Minor, I can talk to any of you directly. I think equity for my colleagues whom I work is to be able to have direct communication with their supervisor in their own language. That is vital. I've been in situations where my supervisor has been someone who doesn't know American Sign Language, and they're observing me in the classroom with an interpreter. And so I'm signing to my kids, and the interpreter's saying something, and I'm like, I didn't say that. No, I didn't say that either. And so, just as a teacher, when I hear it happening, I can only imagine how many times it happens. So, again, I'm so grateful for your willingness to hear us. We've emailed, we've written letters, I know we've done all this stuff. So, again, let us, help us help you. And I know the budget is way less than ideal, way less than ideal. And I guess of all the options out there, my number one ask is just to please keep Dr. Jeffries with us. To have a deaf Program Manager, it's amazing. It's a gift. You don't see it that often. So, thank you very much for your time.
Next is Sally Guzma.
Hello, I'm Dr. Guzma. My pronouns are she/her. And I have worked for the Edmunds School District for 10 years. I and several others will be speaking today to express our heartfelt gratitude to the school board for your continued support of our 2S LGBTQI+ students, families, and staff, particularly your unwavering commitment to our Resolution 2119, signed in 20, 2019, to celebrate Pride Month, and Policy 3211 for gender-inclusive schools in alignment with Washington State law. Though your support, uh, sorry. Through your support, we created training, piloted it, and trained all certificated and paraeducator staff in 2020, 2021 school year. We also trained administrators, and the school board was actually trained in 2022. In our, I would like to share some statistics that were updated since you were last trained. In our 2021 Healthy Youth Survey data of 8th, 10th, and 12th graders who took this survey, it shows that 10% of our students identify on the gender spectrum, and 25% identify as part of the LGBT, 2S LGBTQI+ community. We also know that research unequivocally demonstrates that youth who find their schools to be gender-affirming experience improved mental health. Our policy not only asks for that, but the resolution urges us to not only affirm, but to celebrate diversity. Our youth have and will continue to share what makes them feel affirmed. Having their pronouns and their chosen name respected helps them feel affirmed. In all of our orientations with certificated and paraeducators, we emphasize this, not only just with the Policy 3211, but also with our nondiscrimination Policy 3210, which makes it clear that it is our duty as educators to create an environment that is free of discrimination. We have had an annual event to celebrate pride for over six years, and this is an event that students, families, staff, and community are invited to. Schools are also encouraged to celebrate the 2S LGBTQ community and their contributions to our society, not just in June, but year-round. Often, we learn about people like James Baldwin, Josephine Baker, Bayer Druston, Sally Ride, and Alan Turing, but we often leave out a huge part of who they are, and that makes students feel unseen. Your steadfast, uh, your steadfast support of an inclusive school for all of our students has brought about significant changes in their lives. While I do not claim that we have resolved all issues, we have undeniably taken step forwards, forward. Better yet, we are well-prepared to implement Senate Bill 5462 when the need arises to teach about underrepresented groups in our schools, including those in the LGBTQ+ community, and ensure all students know that someone like them impacted history and society today. Thank you.
Next is Tony Shapiro.
Good evening. My wife and I have resided in Edmunds since the fall of 92. I am here to ask a question about the priorities of this district and suggest that perhaps this, this district could focus on some low-hanging fruit that does not necessarily impact the ability of our students to read, write, and do arithmetic. And that is cutting the DEI program, which in the fall of 92, the seven members of that program were bringing in over $700,000. That doesn't count for French benefits and other costs that the, the district incurs. So I would suggest that the district consider paring back that program or even eliminating it, and use that funds to enhance the deaf ministry and these other ministries that you are working on. That would, that seems to have devalued so greatly. You've built this program over the years, the deaf program over the years, and it's evolved to a point where, as was discussed earlier this evening, people immigrate or come to this district to take part of this program. So you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater by not really focusing on the things that you have enhanced and, and focusing on issues that really are of minor importance. Thank you.
Next is Jason Stillaw.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jason Stillaw. My pronouns are they/them. I go by Mick Stillaw in the classroom. I live in Linwood, and I'm a parent, a community member, and a staff member for the district. I'm here this evening representing the Gender-Inclusive Advisory Team for the Edmunds School District. Two years ago... Two years ago, I reached out to Dr. Vergara about starting an advisory team in the district to represent and support our 2S LGBTQIA+ staff and students. We're made up of teachers, principals, and district staff. Our purpose is to help every student, including our gender expansive students, feel safe and welcome in each and every school here in the district. This fall, we'll open our team to the students, who we hope will lead our work. I grew up in Edmonds School District. I went through school from kindergarten to 12th grade, right here in Edmonds. My kids have only gone to school in this district. When I decided to become a teacher, this is where I wanted to teach. Eventually, I reached that goal, and as I was writing this out, I wondered if, what was the purpose in you knowing this? And my point is, that is it. I've been here, I grew up here, I'm still here, and I've lived it. I've struggled to fit in in school my whole life. People who do the work in our schools know what's going on. Students and staff are challenged with implementing LGBTQIA, equity, and inclusion. We who are doing the work often do the work in small clusters or alone. We have our own trove of resources. We have deep student-led discussions in our classes, and that siloing really needs to change. We have to be doing this work of LGBTQIA, equity, and inclusion together. We have a policy, and we've had PD, but our gender, our policies enforced sporadically, and PD around many equity issues is not consistent. That's the Gender Inclusive Advisory Team's mission and our plan. Make sure we have consistent PD, a common understanding of the state health standards, board policy, and access to common read-alouds across the district around LGBTQIA, equity, and inclusion. I'll end right around there. But before I do, I wanted to share this note with you. It was sent to me last year, but the thanks belongs to you. Because of your actions and your support, it's possible for us to do what we do. On a personal note, thank you for the work that you do and for choosing to value the individual human beings in your care and to help them understand each other. As a mother of a now-adult transgender son who had a hard path through school, your work is much appreciated. Had my son Elias been in an elementary classroom where these conversations happened, it may have shortened the number of years that he struggled with his identity and with suicidal thoughts. You choose, you choose to have a part in saving lives.
And next is Sharon Colseth.
Hi, I'm Sharon, Sharon Colseth, oops, from Work Experiences Program, and I live in Edmonds. And I'm here tonight to talk about the change, again, that is projected. Work, moving work experiences into the high school is comparable to moving the Horticulture Program into the high schools, disbanding it, and then reassembling it. At best, with time and financial investment, it will become a costly and difficult-to-implement plan that is likely to be an imitation or dilution of the program that we currently have now. On paper, we are considered a sheltered or self-contained classroom, but in reality, our students do have access to other students and staff and personnel on campus, several different campuses, programs on the Stryber Lake campus. But moreover, what is most important, and not on the paper, is the fact that our students are able to meet and engage and develop relationships with the students from the other schools. And this is where they meet students like themselves, with whom they have common bonds, and they have relationships that expand through their whole life. And we know of many students that still to this day, so to this day still do, and these are very important. They have half their day currently at their high school and half their day in their own community. This is their community. And, well, will they still have that experience or opportunity in the future? Prior to working with us, they would have no experience in volunteerism or community service. When we take them to Annie's Kitchen, they leave there with a real-world reference that they otherwise would not have. And they, they, will they have that kind of an opportunity? And they learn to use public transportation, resources, comparison shopping. Will they have that opportunity? They are working in Campus Coffee, where we have barista training, espresso drinks, specialty. They practice, and they are cashiering and assisting, and so many jobs involved. Will they have that at every school? Will that be possible? So, this is what we are concerned of. It's not the change we are lamenting, but it's the loss to our students and their families and their communities and the waste.
Thank you to everybody for your public comments and sharing your perspective.